The regular town council meeting for the town of Cave Creek, Arizona is hereby called to order. We have the pledge allegiance. Mark Tate, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Public announcements, there are several tonight. First, I'm announcing that the town, in conjunction with the Cave Creek Rodeo Committee, is in final negotiations with the turquoise circuit to bring the turquoise circuit finals to Cave Creek the first week in November of 2025. Yeah, so that'd be this coming fall, which is huge. The finals are the 10 top cowboys in each event from the 12 or so rodeos in the turquoise circuit. And so we'll have the very best cowboys here in Cave Creek first week in November, and there were three rounds. It's a three-way deal with ourselves, with the turquoise circuit, which is PRCA, and also with the Cave Creek Rodeo Committee. They've been working hard on this, and they've made a proposal. We've made a proposal. And those contracts are being developed right now. There'll be more information announced later on. But this is a huge win for us. We've really fixed the rodeo arena up. We have events that are scheduled. We've got a lot of new organizations that are putting on events there, and we're recruiting more. In fact, we're going to run into a situation very soon where that rodeo arena is going to be used during the good weather months pretty much every weekend. It's not a holiday weekend. So my congratulations to staff on their hard work on this. The second thing, as I testified on behalf of the town of Cave Creek at a House Ways and Means Committee meeting regarding taking away the town's ability to charge sales tax on groceries, on consumable groceries at home. So it's not, I guess, dog food. I'm guessing that. If you go to Walmart, it's just the stuff you can buy, take home, and fix for dinner. It's not the other things. And there were over 20 mayors at this meeting. The meeting was jam-packed, standing room only. And I learned a couple of things that I thought would be interesting to everyone. First of all, the legislature is looking at our finances, especially all these reserves and so forth. And they made the statement, one legislature made the statement, that the towns and cities in Arizona are rolling in money, especially, look at Sean there.
And Richard.
Yeah, I think that was the reaction in the entire room. And last term, they took away rental tax. And this term, they're looking at taking away the tax on groceries, which 71, 71 of the 91 cities and towns in Arizona rely upon. The poster child is Taylor, Arizona, where 28% of their town revenue comes from groceries. And so there was a big back and forth on that, and there have been subsequent letters. We signed on to a letter that was written mostly by towns in northern Arizona that had some wonderful points, refuting the points that the legislature had brought out. I just want to point out that we do have one ally of, there were five Republican members, four Democratic members. One of the Republican members was very interested in a compromise that would grandfather in those that have sales taxes now on food. And that was Representative Livingston from Peoria. And Mayor Beck of Peoria is ramrodding that effort. But the learning and what I brought back, and I heard it here because Sherry had mentioned to me, or maybe others too, I don't know who was in that room when he said that, but how the legislature is looking over, you have a fund that doesn't have a title, like Open Space Fund? If it's not right in with their political idea, which you should be spending money on, they're going to put that in the hopper as places to go get money, and they need money because we've had budget shortfalls last year, and I presume we're going to have another one this year, though it's not been out yet. So it was a very good meeting, and there's a lot of effort on our behalf by the League of Arizona Cities and Towns to head this off at the pass. The interesting thing was this passed the legislature last time, and the governor vetoed it. This time, they're going to bypass the governor by making this a referral for a ballot initiative. Well, probably half the people in Arizona, I know that Phoenix, Mesa, and who's the other? Tucson do not charge sales tax on groceries, but they have vibrant, vibrant commercial operations going. So they have car dealerships, for example. Everybody wants a car dealership because the sales tax on a $50,000 car is pretty nice. But the small towns don't have those, and so we depend on that. And we're in the same boat that the others are, about 10%, 8%, 8% of our, Sherry's shaking her head, 8% of our general fund comes from the tax on food. So. Yep, that's it. But so your takeaways, we're rolling in money. And so we're fair game to have some taken away. And the legislature is watching our books and how we're titling these funds and things. So they know what our reserves are. And I'm thinking of this $35 million reserve. We better spend that on roads, Hal. We better spend it on roads before the legislature takes it. Okay, any other public announcements from council?
And I hope I'm not stealing the thunder of the town manager. But tomorrow evening at 5 o'clock is our very first employee, not employee, volunteer recognition dinner for all the people in this community who volunteer to make our community safe and clean and healthy for all of us who live here and work here and do business here. So it's an exciting event because we've never recognized all these people who do so much good work for this town for no compensation. And so some of those groups include the Planning Commission, the Utility Advisory Committee, the Morningstar Trail Task Force, can't read my handwriting here, the Tourism Bureau, and the Cave Creek Cleanup Committee, as well as the town council. So I think it's really important to recognize these people, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow evening's event.
Anybody else? Okay, we're ready for the call to the public then.
Mark Tate?
Well, Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to come here and.
Mark, turn your microphone on. There's a little button on the base there.
Green light, I think it's on. Is it on today? Appreciate the opportunity to come here. My name is Mark Tate. For your record, I am the president of the Stagecoach Village Community Association. And I'm here to let you guys know about the bike race coming up next weekend. It's called the Belgian Waffle Race, and I just wanted to give you guys a real quick update on this event and what it's all about, and answer any questions that hopefully I can answer. So the Belgian Waffle Ride is a three-day event hosted by Stagecoach Village, beginning on Friday, February 28th, with the vendors representing the cycling community with the premier race, beginning at 7:30 a.m. on Saturday morning, March 1st. The event is a kickoff for the Belgian Waffle Ride season, which is renowned in the cycling community with eight events throughout North America. Other events are hosted in Asheville, North Carolina, Del Mar, California, Cedar City, Utah, Bozeman, Montana, Cave Creek, Arizona, Coecheon Valley, British Columbia, and Carataro, Mexico. This will be the third annual Belgian Waffle Ride in Arizona, in Cave Creek. It's celebrated for its grueling yet exhilarating mix of road and gravel riding, which is contested by mountain bikers, road cyclists, cyclocross, gravel, and BMX enthusiasts. This year's event brings the best riders from all over the world, including participants from Norway, Canada, Mexico, Great Britain, Australia, and Holland. Last year's event had over 800 riders, with this year's participants expected to approach 1,000 cyclists. These are teams, these are professional amateur cyclists from all over the country. The demographics on this are pretty astonishing. So they bring teams, they bring their families. It's a big event. The Belgian Waffle Ride is known for its challenging distance of 103 miles, starting in Cave Creek and meandering through Scottsdale, Phoenix, Carefree, and ultimately finishing in Stagecoach Village. The course includes an array of difficult terrains, long climbs, technical descents, and rugged off-road sections. There are also a 68-mile and a 32-mile race in this event. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Mayor, you and I spent some time talking about, you know, having events that bring families to Cave Creek, folks that'll come to the restaurants, folks that'll come to Stagecoach Village, spend their money here, spend some time. And we think this is a super event, and looking forward to it, and appreciate all the help from staff that we've got in putting this event together, and look forward to all of you coming and seeing the bike riders.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Stagecoach Village is doing a great job bringing people to town, so I thank you for your efforts.
David Phelps?
For the record, David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. I just wanted to say thanks for the warm welcome and graciousness shown at the offsite. At lunchtime, I was not part of the pre-order, but I certainly had many offers from people, and it was very kind and heartwarming to, Tom wouldn't share his sandwich, but others offered theirs. And I just thought it was really nice. It was very kind, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
No additional speakers.
Okay, well, we have presentations tonight. We're going to take the first one out of order. We'll have the fire presentation, the Fire EMS Quarterly Report, first off, rather than last. Would you just wait, hold just a second? I forgot the town manager report. Grady, would you make your report?
Sure. I was looking forward to just moving on. I just wanted to make a generalized announcement. So as the council's aware and the public's aware, we have a local landmarks program. It's kind of neat. We recognize a number of the local landmarks that are near and dear to our residents and visitors' hearts. And so this Thursday at 10:00 a.m., the Cave Creek Regional Park will be the next recipient. And so invite all to be there. So that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Take it away, Jim.
Mayor, thank you for having the boss go first. I appreciate that. This is the quarterly, second quarter report for the Cave Creek Fire and EMS Responses and System. It also is a summary, a quick summary of the annual report, because we started, if you recall, we started in January of '22, and so we have a calendar year that we track also. So with me is Chief Tobin, Daisy Mountain Fire Chief. He keeps me out of trouble, so thank you. You don't believe that, Councilman?
He believes it.
So the first slide is just a quick summary of the last quarter, October through December. And it counts also, the final part of that is the year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date. We track it by two ways, fiscal year-to-date, and we also track it as calendar year-to-date. You can see we average about 63 calls a month in town for Christopher Service. And total, we go on about 68 calls a month. So you heard this when we started up, that our units were going to be out of Cave Creek quite a bit, but it hasn't tracked that way. In the three years we've been tracking it, we leave town only about four or five times, and those are usually for major incidents, which we'll show you here in a little bit. But so we're fairly busy, we're fairly decent, and we have all the different types of responses that you would get. Next up is just the slides I put up showing the percentages of calls that we get. And the blue is our emergency medical calls, and this is tracked fairly consistently at about three-quarters of our calls are emergency medical calls. We've talked about this in the past, and it's consistently done that both in the quarter and year-to-date. The next slide is just a quick overview of the last four years, or three years, broken up by calendar year. And I threw in the one fiscal year, so you can see. So we're running right now 780 calls a year total in town of Cave Creek, with anywhere from 72% to 74% of those emergency medical calls. And why that's important, we'll talk about that in just a little bit, but it's been consistent. Once we hit our stride here in the second year, it's been consistent. So that's a good thing, that we're not getting extra calls, and we're not changing too dramatically. Once in a while, we switch off on, depending on the time of year, if we have a few more trail rescues or a few more fires in the summer, that type of thing. But consistently, our numbers are holding pretty straightforward there. The next slide is just to show you, you know, we're a partner with Daisy Mountain, and this is what it takes to run a fire department of seven stations. So we pay our share of the overhead for this, and the staffing, and it's up to Chief Tobin to provide us the staffing by our IGA, and for him to fill the positions that are open and have the human resources and all those in place, payroll and all that stuff. That takes an awful lot of time, and I'm sure glad he does it instead of we have to do it with the town. We could double the size of the town staff if we had to do it by ourselves. So we appreciate him doing that, but that's the total, what it takes to run a fire department of this size.
Sure. Could you define what sworn is versus non-s sworn?
Yep, we can. So firefighters generally have taken, they've sworn their allegiance to the state, the country, to abide by the Constitution. So firefighters, police officers, peace officers are sworn members of public safety. Non-s sworn members would be civilian employees that have not undergone that same oath. Those in Daisy Mountain would be EMTs and paramedics on our ambulances.
So is it union versus non-union?
No, it has nothing to do with union versus non-union. It just has to do with whether or not they've taken that sworn allegiance to the country and to the state.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The noteworthy events for the second quarter, I broke it out by month again, October, November, and December. And the important one for October was October 21st and December 2nd. You approved the IGAs with the caring corps and with the school district to pay the opioid funds and get the training out for the residents. And we've done a few events, and they've been very successful. And so we're going to continue doing that until the funds run out, but we still have those. We still have them in the bank, and so we keep doing it. And Sherry keeps telling me I'm allowed to spend it, so we will. November, the big thing in November was both Whispering Hills and Rancho Manana, both of them recertified for Firewise and our Firewise communities, and we'll continue going forward with that. And a special note that we have three other communities now that have showed interest in that. And we're going to see if we can get additional Firewise communities in Cave Creek. One is Galloway Ridge, another one is the Enclave. And so we'll be working on that and getting additional communities to do that. And then in December, we took a delivery of our new truck, our new 3,000-gallon water tanker. And then we did the actual dedication and grand opening of the fire station, which seems to be working out very well. I don't know if you guys like it or not, Chief, but.
Our guys like it just a little bit.
Compared to the.
It's a beautiful facility. Yes, they're very satisfied with how well it's turned out. Thank you.
But it seems to be working very well. And then, Chief, you did the ground opening or the groundbreaking on your station, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, just briefly, some of you were in attendance last week as we broke ground on Fire Station 144, 2402 East Cloud, right to the west of the Cave Creek line, and in the Daisy Mountain Fire District, just by about two blocks. So we have located that fire station. Cloud is one mile north of the Carefree Highway. So it's strategically located between both communities, and because of the partnership we have with the town of Cave Creek, we'll be co-staffing that fire station together. So we're excited about actually starting construction. We're really close to getting our final permit. As you all know, that there's some glitches along in those processes every now and then, but nothing that's insurmountable for us to overcome. So we're getting ready to start the earth moving there that we need to open up Fire Station 144. We expect it to be open by earlier than this time next year and fully staffed.
And as you mentioned, we will be supporting that, paying for half the operating costs and half of the staffing for that. So that's in the budget, which you've already seen. The next slide is, I want to touch on this. I barely touched on it last time, but with 70, about 75% of our calls being emergency medical, Daisy Mountain is the only department in the state that gets both the lifetime gold and the lifetime target heart attack awards. They're the only ones in the state. I gave you, in this annual report, this quarterly report, I gave you the guidelines on what it takes to do that. A lot of it is how you treat your patients. A lot of it is how you track the data, and you have to submit for that. You don't get to be a gold member like they are unless you've done this for several years in a row. And so this is just to illustrate that the residents of Cave Creek and the town is getting the best service that anybody's getting in Arizona, especially when it comes to three-quarters of our calls with the medical calls. And so it's part of their, it's not part of their agreement, but this is how we track how well they're doing on the emergency medical calls. But there's two slides there. There's this one, which shows the award that they got for 2024. And then this is kind of the guidelines on what it takes. And just a quick shot of the Arizona departments that do this. Some have won the gold award. Some have won the target heart attack, but nobody else in the state has both of those awards like the Daisy Mountain Fire Department, Fire District does. Nobody else does that. So Chief, if you want to talk about that for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As always, I defer to the extraordinary work that the EMTs and paramedics do with the Daisy Mountain Fire Medical Department, because they're the ones that achieve these awards. We gather the data, we put the information in, but it's their hard work and their skill that gets us to this level. And I'm continually impressed by the amount of work that they do. Some of you may know that prior to coming to Daisy Mountain, I was with the Phoenix Fire Department. I was a captain for 22 years in Central Phoenix, and I can tell you that the firefighters at Daisy Mountain do so much more than I did when we were in Central Phoenix, where as the crew flew, I could be at a hospital in five minutes, depending on which direction I went. So it was a much different environment that I was familiar with, because our goal there was to get people to the hospital really fast, because that's where they got definitive care. But here, that's not as much of an option because of the distance. So as a result, pre-hospital medical care that our firefighters and paramedics provide is just instrumental in the success rate of patients with heart attacks and strokes. And these awards are what you see as a result of that. So I'm always incredibly proud of the work that they do.
And I'll throw in a comment on top of this, if you didn't know I was going to do it, but in my previous life, I was also in charge of EMS for a while. And my medical director, when we would talk to the community, would say, "The medics on the trucks and the engines and the firefighter medics can do everything that we can do in the emergency room, with the exception of surgery." So a lot of people don't understand that now. They say, "Why are you staying at the house so long?" It's because they have the meds, they have the telemetry, they have everything they need to stabilize and treat, and then stabilize, and then they can transport. But he would make that statement consistently, that the medics are good enough and the equipment's good enough that they can do everything except for surgery, that they can do in the emergency room. So that especially helps in a little community like ours, a little bit rural, more rural, where they're not transporting quite as quick.
Well, I wasn't a paramedic, Jim, but I did try and do surgery a time or two. Didn't necessarily work out very well. That doesn't mean I didn't want to try, but we did the best we could. But when it comes to strokes and heart attacks, early intervention with medications that we now carry on every fire truck goes a long way on the successful outcome of those emergency medical calls that we go on, and that's a reflection of these awards.
This is kind of the major incidents that we had in town this last quarter. And I'm only going to highlight just a couple of them. We did have a house and brush fire. But I want to focus a little bit on emergency medical again. We had two, what I considered major medicals. One was a gunshot, and one was a trauma code. And just so that you know, these are very difficult on the firefighters when they see this. Another type of call that's very difficult is a drowning call of kids. But these calls are very difficult. And so just so you understand, when something like this happens, we call in for peer support and additional support for those firefighters. The one, we actually called support for the sheriffs, I believe, and for the other crews from other departments that came, just to make sure that they could address it. And when I was in Scottsdale a little bit, we would actually send crews home because the call or the incident was so stressful. And so I just wanted to bring that up, because we had two of those this last quarter, and keep that in the back of your minds of what these young men and women go through when they go on some of these incidents. And Chief, I'll let you talk about that a little bit, the peer support, if you want.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Mayor, council members, we have a very robust peer support system in Daisy Mountain, where we've trained our own members to be peer support counselors. They're available 24/7, 365. After incidents like this, our second-level supervisors, our battalion chiefs, will make contact with company officers to do an initial size-up on our members to see whether or not they're continuing to be fit for duty for the rest of the tour. In these situations, I think particularly the one that was the worst, it was the end of their tour, so they were going home at the end of their day, so at least they didn't have an impact of additional calls. But that didn't stop us from making individual contact with individuals to make sure that they were successfully coping and they had good resilience moving forward for their days off that they needed, and we checked back with them on the other days. But we also contacted, as Jim said, the deputy sheriffs that were on scene and the rural metro firefighters that were there as well, and offered any assistance that we could provide to their members that might not have the same type of resources available to them. So that's always just part of our brotherhood and sisterhood in the fire service, and we extended that to our friends that we felt might need it as well.
And then just as a note, the bottom part of that is auto aid responses. And typically, the auto aid responses are large incidents. So that's, like I said, we only go out about five times a month to help the other jurisdictions, but it's usually on a big incident, a major wildland fire or a major house fire, and that's what shows up on these reports when you take a look at them. Want to talk real briefly about, we added in about wildland stuff, and Chief, I'll let you talk first about the CAR 1419 and how that works.
Yeah, thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. Starting in May of each year and going to about Labor Day, we start considering our wildland staffing, where we provide additional staffing during that time period. We will do it previous to that if the weather and the conditions justify ramping up prior. And usually, that's going to be indicative of the climate and the weather conditions, wildfire conditions that we might have. But at least during that period of time, we stand up additional units. You do here in Cave Creek as well. You put two additional firefighters on duty on your Type 6, which is the brush truck that you have staffed here. In addition to that, the Daisy Mountain Fire District does the same thing throughout the district, not just here in Cave Creek, but in other areas of the district. But we have this, which is just a pickup truck that you see this picture here, but the CAR 1419 program is numbered after the 19 Yarnell Hill firefighters that died about 10 years ago. And each jurisdiction in the automatic aid system puts in a wildland specialist if they have wildland exposure. So Scottsdale has one, Phoenix has one, Peoria has one, Glendale has one. Everybody that has wildland exposure puts in service these firefighters that are red-carded through the state of Arizona as being an engine boss. They've had additional training that provides additional oversight to the firefighters, and they are wildland specialists, and they can help our incident commanders direct resources as necessary. They also are the conduit to our partners in the Department of Fire and Forestry Management in the state, the Tonto, and the BLM. So they're our conduits to all of these other partners and really help with keeping our firefighters safe during a wildland incidence and can do a better job at forecasting needs in the future than the firefighters are actually doing the work out in the. than the firefighters are actually doing the work out in the in the wildland urban interface. So we put this unit in service again about May of each year, goes through about Labor Day or whatever the weather might require. But the Daisy Mountain has three, four of these individuals that rotate into this vehicle and is dispatched on every wildland urban interface dispatch in the automatic aid system.
And then, of course, you know, that you paid for and bought the brush truck and the engine and the tenders. And so we're all stacked up and ready to go for this year. So I added one additional slide, I'm sorry, it's not in your packet, but we can make sure it's available. This is what's going to happen to some of the wildland stuff that we're talking about. We did have a four hundred and twenty acre wildland fire in January, as you're well aware. We're talking more and more with the Department of Forestry and with the Tonno Forests that we might not have a wildland season anymore. We might have a wildland issue all year. The January kind of proved that a little bit. Luckily, it was just grasses and it was, you know, easily contained once it got to where we could get to it. But we're working on a county or town wildland preparedness plan. We do have two wildland preparedness events for the public open March thirteenth at three thirty at the fire station, and we will have their Chief Tobin and his staff. I'll be there. We'll have the Director of the Department of Forestry and Fire Management. We'll have the Incident Commander from the Tonno Forests there. We'll be there to answer questions and to show and talk about what we have. We'll do a complete outline and a complete presentation, but give people the chance to see what we have. And then we'll do a second one on Wednesday, April ninth, at three thirty at the library. We'll do the similar program for people that didn't make the first one. And then to follow those up, after the March thirteenth one, on that Saturday, March fifteenth, is the first of our brush collection days, when we'll take the materials from our town residents. And we'll collect that and get rid of it. And then after the April ninth one, on Saturday, April nineteenth, we'll do the same thing at the water campus. Bring your stuff to us and we'll take it and make sure that we do it. We've done eight events so far, and we've done, I don't have a final number yet, but we've done well over a hundred and fifty tons of plant material that we have accepted as the town from our residents and disposed of. So there's a lot happening in these areas. People are giving us defensible space, people are working on this and they're doing it themselves. And so we appreciate that. I mentioned that we did the Firewise Communities, Whispering Hills, Rancho Minano, Galloway Ridge is in the process. There's an enclave that's started the process. The May first, on May first, as the chief mentioned, we, stage one fire restrictions go in place for the town of Cave Creek. That's the ordinance that you passed that we talked about a little bit earlier. So that'll happen. And then, as needed, we will bring up the additional staffing. We brought it up early last year. And we also brought up, we, it happens to us sooner than it does in downtown Phoenix. We brought up additional responses, which is on this list for you of what the difference is between the responses, and that will occur based on the need, not based on what Phoenix Fire tells us. We tell them, this is what we want to respond on these types of incidents. And then we still have the cooperative agreement with the state. And that means that if, just to back up a little bit, they are the ones that bring in the air tankers and the air support. We don't, we don't have a helicopter, in spite of what some people in town think. Cave Creek does not have a helicopter. But we will work through the Department of Forestry and Fire Management and work through the CAR nineteen folks that the chief was talking about. And that's where we get the resources. On March ninth, we have a meeting with the department, and it's a southwest region. And they will tell us at that meeting what resources they have been able to get on standby. They contract with all those types of folks, with the air tankers, with the helicopters, with the crews from the prisons and stuff like that, the hand crews. So they will tell us what they've been able to get contracted for this year, so we'll know what we have in reserve, what resources we can call. But that's on March ninth. So with that, I just wanted to give you a real quick overview of what's happening on the wildland stuff. We're trying to get out in front of it as much as we can, and we will. And we'll still do, I will still do any individual inspection of any individual home to look at it, to see if you want to do this. Firewise has to be a community, it has to be a HOA or something like that. But I will do individual inspections of people if they want to take a look at their individual properties. And I'll, I'll say, Chief might not say it, but I'll say this, if you give our firefighters a chance, they'll, they'll protect your home. They're very aggressive. You give them a little bit of defensible space and an opportunity, they'll do a very good job. And I've seen that now for three years. Chief, if there's any final comments that you'd like to make?
No, Jim, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Questions, counsel?
I just had a quick question. Does Cave Creek currently have the last iteration of the Uniform Fire Code? Or when was the last time that the town council did something with the issue?
I believe you're on the current edition of the fire code, yes. There's a second code that I don't think would apply here. It's called the Wildland Interface Code. I don't think we can meet the guidelines of that code, it's too restrictive. So that's where we work on Firewise guidelines and we work on with individuals on giving us the defensible space that we've outlined.
Thanks.
Jim, can you elaborate on the four mountain trail rescues on the significant slide you showed? I noticed half of those were mountain trail rescues.
Yeah, there's, there's no consistency on that. I was trying to track and see if we had more issues at Spurcross versus Black Mountain versus Go John over in the park. And it's not, the only consistency is, I probably shouldn't say this, the only consistency is people making bad decisions and going out when they shouldn't be going out. We saw that last year, there were some people from Canada that had no business being on the Spurcross trail and it did not end well. And so we're prepared to do that, the firefighters do that. I think that, and I don't know if I've done it to this council, but the previous council, I gave you a list of what responds to a trail rescue as an incident, and I can do that again for you and show you the resources that we get. The, we now have a technical rescue team with Daisy Mountain. They've got training and they've done the training, the resources for that. And we get the support from Scottsdale and Phoenix and others. And it's a pretty incredible list that goes when it comes out as a trail rescue, just because it's a difficult, difficult access, usually, and difficult to do that.
Thank you.
So, but it's usually, I'm sorry to be so blunt, but it's usually a person making a bad decision and had no business in where they went to.
Other, other questions from council? I had one question was, the one universal things about a fire, and it's year round now. We were having fires in December and January and February. I don't recall, being an Arizona native, I don't recall fires in the desert at all, let alone in the winter. So it's, it's changed.
It depends on the season, and we've had some that have gone late into the season, like October, November. If, you know, but this was, I was surprised with the January one. We have had fires in, in February and March, which had some ninety degree days in the past. But again, it's usually not consistent, we'll see how it goes this year.
There's one right now, the mine fire up off, I don't know if, is there anything green left up on eighty-seven, the beeline toward Swar Lake? I mean, there's, seems like we've had a dozen fires there in the last year.
I, I don't know how they keep burning towards Preska, I don't know. Seems like it all burned last year.
The, the one universal thing, every time there's a wildland fire in town, is complaints about communications. They see smoke in the sky. I think there is probably an expectations in this day of communications that there's going to be a continuous minute by minute flow of updates. And when that isn't there, people are unhappy and feel afraid, they're concerned about it. I, I think that's something I hope we can address at our meetings, is setting the expectation so that it's not going to be a social media kind of blow. The incident commander makes, it makes those, I assume it's your fourteen nineteen person would be the incident commander, is that, is that right?
Mr. Mayor, close, tactically, no. Our incident commanders would be a battalion chief or a deputy chief. It was that hour, our fourteen nineteen is a captain generally, that's a, that's why we call him a specialist. So he, he provides technical information to the incident commander. So he works in, in the incident command team with the incident commander, but in many cases is more mobile than in a fixed stationary position. But irregardless, you're on the right track. How, how long we're going to be in this environment of dry, no rain? You know, your guess is as good as mine. And, and then, you know, monsoons come and lightning causes fires are another whole issue, right? So it just seems like it's not just here in Arizona, but in other places throughout the southwest. It's, the season has become all year long. But the occurrence of brush fires is clearly identified generally during that period of May and Labor Day, the more regularly occurring. So that's why we use those dates as when we upstaff, because we have more occurrences during that time. That doesn't mean that we don't have occurrences outside of that time, but they're more frequent during that time. So we can always adjust those. Like Jim said, we brought it in early last year. I think we pretty much shut it down early, at least each year, the last two years, because right around Labor Day, we started to get moisture in the air, humidity, certainly no rain, but that slowed down our occurrence of incidents. So we monitor that every day and utilize different criterias for maybe one day we have it and the next day we don't. We use those red flag warning days, hot, windy, dry conditions would definitely be ones that you're the most worried about when it comes to wildland fires. So we can go up and down depending on what our needs are. And my staff at Daisy Mountain Staffing, we look at that every single day to determine whether or not we need to bring up or take down, right? So it wouldn't make sense if it was raining out for you to have a type six staffed here, right? So you would not staff that day if that was what the weather was going to be. So we do adjust like you would expect us to do, and we're good, you know. We take the public tax dollars, you know, seriously, despite what the legislature might think, you know. So we respond to it the best way that we can, and so that it's the most cost effective for all of our communities.
But to the mayor's question, do you have communications person on staff? So who does address providing the facts when there is a fire?
I'll, I'll take that, Mayor and Vice Mayor. For example, this last fire that we had, the four hundred and twenty acre fire, I know I missed that meeting because I was at a opioid meeting instead of coming to the council meeting. But I, I was in contact with the incident commanders. I was on scene over there for most of the day. I worked through the town manager and Bo. And our, if you were to look at our Cave Creek website, we had continuous updates throughout that entire weekend. And again, I, sometimes I talk a little too much, but I actually talked to a person that said, how come you didn't call me directly and tell me that that incident was going on? And I said, well, we were on television, we actually did it on the news. We updated our websites, we did a bunch of things. And they said, well, I don't, I don't get the paper, I don't listen to the news, I don't, I don't read your websites. And they wanted us to call them directly every time, well, there's no way we can call every resident every time.
When is red alert warranted?
Red alert is primarily for evacuations. If we have a large incident that we know is going into an area and we're having trouble stopping it, we would red alert and pre-alert everybody for evacuations.
So not for, were you going to say something?
I was just going to add on to that. I think that's the misconception. I think people think that, you know, code red is the system for notifying people of these incidents. And the issue is, you, you don't want to, every time there is a fire, use that to notify people about the fire, because the issue is, then after a while, they, they get tired of having this multiple texts or, or voice messaging or emails. And so it's really more for actions. If we have an evacuation, or let's just say there's a hazardous spill on Carefree Highway at Cave Creek Road, and it's going to cause a diversion of traffic, then that's something we would let people know about. But it's only for things that are actions, it's not to just notify people about information. But we have found that social media is very effective in getting the word out, our website, and we just need to educate, and that's what we're going to bring up to the mayor's point at this meeting, is, one, number one is expectations, because I think some people, they have a high expectation on the type of information and how they receive it. And we're going to make that very clear at the meeting, what kind of information that they are going to receive and where they should go. And, and everybody can be passive, if they want to just sign up for code red, number one, they should do that, just in case there is an evacuation. But also, we have a listserv where they'll get notifications on this kind of information automatically once they get signed up. So we're going to, we're going to make that information available at these two public meetings coming up.
Very good.
And then also go into the technical part of the firefighting, fire suppression, you know, like our water and water supply and what they can do, because it's, it's, they're part of the equation as well. The residents need to help us with clearing their properties as well.
Very good, thank you.
There are joint responsibilities here, and I'm not sure the public understands their responsibility, where theirs starts and where ours ends, and drawing that line, and them understanding that, that there's nothing going on if they're not seeing something on, on the website, for example, or if they, they can't get on the website. We, we just, some way we have to set that expectation. It'll probably never be perfect, but we'll make the effort. Any other questions, comments from council? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you very much. And by the way, Daisy Mountain's doing a fabulous job. I, I don't know how else to say it, I sat up on the hill and watched them put a fire out. And I'm just so happy, and I know the town is much safer. So Brian, thank you and all the people that work with you.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to call the Audit Committee to order, and it will be running in parallel with our council meeting. Next on the agenda is a presentation discussion regarding the annual audit and annual comprehensive financial report for the town of Cave Creek for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four to the Audit Committee and joint, and Town Council jointly.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So we felt instead of having two separate meetings with the exact same set of people that we would do this together. So we are here, the audit has been completed. We have the audited financial statements and all the various reports that we will be talking about. We have the principal for our audit firm, Brian Hemmerly, is here to go over some of the things about the audit as well. I do plan to talk about the financial status of where we were at with our, our last fiscal year report. So we'll talk about that as well. The legal requirement is that the audit report must be presented to the council. There is no legal requirement about an audit committee or anything. So this, this is the required, is reporting it to the council. So part of, with the audit, there are a variety of things that need to be addressed in our audit, not just an audit of our financial statements, but the auditors are also required to audit our expenditure limitation report. They're required to audit us regarding our HERF monies and did we spend them properly. They're required to audit us related to federal grant funding and whether or not we spent the federal grants appropriately. So Brian will be going through all that, and I'm happy to say that we did not have any audit findings, no significant deficiencies and any of that kind of things. So if we can bring up Brian's presentation?
Okay, thank you, Sheri. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Brian Hemmerly. As Sheri mentioned, I am the lead audit principal with Baker Tilly, the external audit firm that does your annual comprehensive financial report, which we call the ACFR. We've got a brief presentation for you here, a couple of slides that we are going to go through. These slides are really required communication by auditing standards with members of governance, the council, the town. The first slide here is sort of a summary slide to talk about the overall results of the audit. So the audit was for the June thirty, twenty twenty-four financial statements this year. The audit was, report, the report was dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. We completed the audit with an unqualified opinion, what's considered a clean opinion in auditing standard, speak of sorts. Government auditing standards compliance report is the second report we issued. This is sort of a, a report, we call it the Yellow Book Report, but really, it's a report over your compliance with laws, grants, contracts, debt covenants, things of that nature. That report did also receive a clean opinion, or what we considered not, no instances of non-compliance or other matters. Nothing came to our attention during the course of the audit that was a non-compliance. And then also, we did not have any material weaknesses this year. Material weaknesses, accommodation deficiencies, or perhaps a very large, significant type deficiency that we would find with internal control structures or financial accounting matters, maybe journal entries that needed to be booked that were not booked properly. We did not have any of those items during the year, this year. Really, an audit, this slide is to discuss what the audit is. Like Sheri mentioned, it is required by statute, it's a financial statement audit. We provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. We don't provide absolute assurance, and the difference being, absolute assurance would require we test every transaction and every activity at the town. It would take quite a long time, cost quite a lot of money. What we do, though- What we do though is we follow audit standards that are required by government accounting standards to make sure that you are materially stating your financial statements correct throughout the year and for the June 30, 2024 fiscal year end. You had, they are free from all material misstatements this year. We use statistically valid sampling. We do internal control test work. We walk through and observe controls. We interview members of governance, members of management. We do a number of items that are required by our, our auditing standards to provide that reasonable assurance on your financial statements. A couple of bullets here that are required for me to discuss with you. There were no internal control matters. We did test various controls. We had no reportable findings with that. There were no qualitative aspects with the county, the town of Cave Creek's accounting practices. Those practices and those qualitative aspects can be found in note one of your financial statements. There were no significant unusual transactions that were not tested. We did test all significant unusual transactions, no issues there, no significant difficulties encountered or to report. No disagreements with management this year. There were no circumstances, circumstances that affected the content of our audit report. We're not aware of any outside audit consultation. There were no uncorrected misstatements identified, and there were no other audit findings to report. A couple of other items here, I've already talked a little bit about the other consultation with accounting firms and compliance with laws and regulations, both received clean opinions. Fraud, we did not identify any instances of known or suspected fraud during the audit. Had we identified them, we would, of course, have reported that out to you and management as well. With during the course of product, no items were detected related to fraud. There's no going concern issues that we are concerned with this year, and we are not aware of any material related party transactions that needed to be disclosed in the financial statements. Our non-attest services, we do help prepare the financial statements, and we do help with a few journal entries throughout the year, or not throughout the year, but at the end of the audit. And those are the items that really are not attest in nature, but they were items that we have to disclose to you as the council. The third report is the expenditure limitation report that Sheri mentioned. This is required by the state of Arizona. Your expenditure limitation this year was $56.5 million. After going through the expenditure subject to that limitation, there was only 33.1 million that was required to be reported. So you were under your expenditure limitation by 23.4 million, and that is filed with the Auditor General's Office for the state of Arizona. And there were no issues with that. It was timely filed.
That's probably why the legislature thinks we have a lot of money, we're not spending it all.
Yeah. The fourth report here, you do have what's called the coronavirus state local fiscal recovery funds. That's your federal grant, it's one of your largest grants this year. There's an option that the town decided to exercise this year for, we usually call it a single audit. This is a separate type of attestation reports and examination that the federal government allows us to do for that specific grant. We did do that examination this year, and there were no reportable instances or no findings as a result of our examination. So you received a clean report for your federal grant related to that coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund money. My last two slides are really, really high level financial activity. I know Sheri gets much more detailed, but just some really good financial data here. 2023 is your blue bar, 2024 is your darker bar graph. The assets are up this year, liabilities are down. That's always a great trend. Your revenues are up, your expenses are up just a bit. Overall, your equity, your net position, it continues to trend upwards. And this last one is really your equity for just the fund balances and, and net position related to your government, all your governmental funds, your general fund, and then your proprietary funds, which really should be self-sustaining funds. They should charge enough user charging fees to support the expenses of the fund. You'll see over the last three years, there's been a nice increase in all those equity areas for all those types of funds. 2023 to 2024, a bit flat for governmental and general funds. So they're pretty much staying stable for the last two years. Proprietary funds continue to increase though over the last two years. And that is my brief presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, as you know, I have some.
Yep.
I, I texted Brian this morning just for due disclosure. Santa Cruz County had a $38 million embezzlement. Were they under the same standards and audit as we have here? I presume since they're state, county?
Yeah, the counties have, there's a few nuances, differences, but the, the county is that kind of county. Most counties in the state are audited by Arizona Auditor General, so they do not have public firms like us that audit those larger counties. Unfortunately, that fraud, I believe, began in 2013 and was just recently discovered in the last two years. And, and yes, they do have to follow government accounting standards. They do have to follow government accounting, government auditing standards. So they do receive many of the same reports that you receive.
So why wasn't it caught? Give us a, I mean, what would it take to, that, that's a lot of money. So how does that go on for that length of time and not be found? By, by internal controls or by audit? Either one?
Yeah, that's a great question.
I'll jointly throw that question out.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your, your question, members of council. The, my understanding, and this is basically purely based off reports that I've read, so I'm not involved in that audit. I don't know the nitty gritty of what's going on there, but from what I understand is the treasurer, who's an elected official for the county, it's the county treasurer, was issuing wire payments to fraudulent companies, like ghost companies is what we would call them. They weren't real companies, in the form of millions of dollars to help supplement, I suppose, her lifestyle over the last 10 years. And from what I understand, she fraudulently forged documents for the bank statements and the bank reconciliations to keep it off the books. That is how it's read in the, the news articles I've read. The Auditor General's Office, who was the auditor or is the auditor for the county, has requested the state legislature give them the ability to receive banking information directly from the bank as opposed to through the county, which I suppose is what was happening there. With your town, we do confirm all your cash and investments directly with the banking institutions. So it wouldn't be really possible for the most part. The only thing that perhaps if there was an account off books that we were not aware of, that was not disclosed to us, a bank account that is, that's off books, that would be very challenging to discover. But for the most part, that from what I understand is, was the internal control that was lacking. Some other things they should have done, wire transfer should really have someone who creates the wire and then approves the wire, a separate person, so segregation of duties in the wire process. It was surprising to see that that wasn't occurring with the particular bank the county was using. So those types of controls are the types of things that would have probably detected, prevented and detected those types, that, that type of fraud.
Sheri, anything to say, add to that?
No, I don't really have anything, thing to add. I, I haven't looked into that particular fraud and what exactly happened there. So I don't really have any insight, but the things that Brian brought up were, were good solutions. And that is what they do. They, they do verify what our bank and investment balances are. And sometimes auditors will actually have you like log on to the bank so they can see like live what your balances are right there. So we do that as well.
Yeah, if I, if I may, we did actually, thank you Sheri, we did both of those. And then in addition to that, we do, with our sampling, we do statistically valid sampling of certain expenditures throughout the year. Now, you might be able to get away with it for a few years, but over the course of 10 plus years, it would be hard to see how that much money would go without being tested at some point in that population of samples that the auditors were testing. So she must have had a, a way of keeping it off the books entirely where the auditors had no idea it was occurring.
Other questions from council?
What happened to her?
I think she was, she's going to be sentenced in the next couple of months, but I think they're saying 35 years in prison plus restitution, which I think she's paid back 2 million, but it was 38 million total that she stole.
It's a pretty good lifestyle.
Yeah, I think it's now the largest government accounting fraud in Arizona.
Probably. I think the Dixon, Illinois one was still bigger than that.
Yeah, it was. Yeah.
Questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much. It's pleased to get such a good audit. Congratulations to our accounting staff for performing, and Brian, always good to see you, and thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to go through the financial highlights. Thank you, Brian. So I know it's nice to know that we had a successful audit. We didn't have any, any findings, but part of the things that are important to know is, well, what, what is our financial status? What can you tell and learn from the audited financial statements? We go through a lot of effort through the budget process to create a plan, identify what the priorities are of how we want to spend the money. The, this audited financial report is the actual results of what happened. So it's kind of both ends of, of that process. So I think I can move from here. So I do have on the slides, so the, the acronym that Brian had mentioned, ACFR, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I have reference to the page numbers in the report where you can find this information. So I'm going to start off with, with the governmental expenditures. The way that the financial statements are required to be presented is the governmental funds are presented separately from the proprietary funds. The proprietary funds follow more of business type accounting, and the governmental funds follow more of a governmental style of accounting that we call modified accrual. So on the governmental side with the expenditures, this is showing by fund. The expenditures went from 10.7 million to 15.3 million in fiscal year 24. That's an increase of 4.6 million or 30%. Looking at this from a fund perspective, that increase is primarily within the general fund, going from 9.4 million to 14.5. That's a $5.1 million increase or 54%. And it largely has to do with capital improvements. We had the fire station remodel. That was 3.1 million that was spent during fiscal year 24. And bathrooms at the rodeo grounds were about 400,000.
Didn't we, we've also tried to spend a lot of money on roads. Is that part of that too? Because we, we.
That was not a significant change compared from year to year when I looked at that.
Really? I, we, we had planned to, to spend three to four times the amount of money from, this is my memory speaking, in, in road repairs as opposed because of our backlog. That didn't happen?
You, you'll, you'll see when we get to that slide that we were significantly under budget.
Okay.
When we look at this from a functional perspective, so one of the things with governmental accounting, we look at categories of functions. And so the first one there, the general government, that's not synonymous with administration. Because in general government, there's things like the court costs, there's planning and zoning, so other things other than just administrative costs. So of that increase, looking at it from a, a functional perspective, the general government went up about 800,000 or 19%. And there are a variety of things that were included in that. There was turnover during the year. And so some of the turnover and the reclassification of positions had some impact. And there was professional services that were hired to help cover interim vacancies. Some of the changes in the costs here are also just because of doing some reclassification of some of the information. So building safety costs, they were not budgeted separately in fiscal year 24 and therefore not tracked separately. In the previous year, they were tracked separately and coded to public safety, which is actually what the Government Finance Officers Association recommendation is, is those would be part of public safety. But because they weren't separately tracked compared to planning and zoning, they're included in the general government number. So that difference between the two years is about 400,000. And then in fiscal year 23, facilities maintenance was included in public safety, but it's really Government Finance Officers Association recommends that to be treated as general government. And so that difference was about 200,000. Looking at some of the others, so you can see the really big, and do I have? Let me adjust. Quite certain how to get that to work over here, but so here at the pointer, so the big discrepancy in the columns at the end here is capital outlay. So that was an increase of 3.2 million over the prior year, 190%, which 3.1 million of that was the fire station remodel. Looking at from the governmental side, revenues based off of by fund. So we went from 16.7 million to 17.2, an increase of about half million or 3%. When you're looking at the slices of the pie, so really the, the bigger discrepancy there would be the green area. So the spur cross and open space revenues went from 1.8 million to about 2.4, increase of about half million or 29%. And that was basically related to the change in the allocations with the sales tax revenues. We did talk about that during the retreat. I do have more slides talking about specifically the sales tax revenue at the end. So I can do a little refresher at that point, but that was because of the reallocation. We report the revenues based off of the sources. And so the two most significant ones there, so looking at the sales tax revenues within the governmental funds is a decrease of about 300,000 or 3%. It actually went up slightly when we get to the slides that show the sales tax revenues in total. The investment income, so those bars there, investment income went up about 800,000 or 79%, which was largely due to higher interest rates. Looking at our fund balances for the governmental funds, so we went from 37.2 million to 36.7. That was a decrease of about a half million or 2%. The general fund went from 31.9 million to 31.2 million. So it was a, about $700,000 decrease or 2%. And a big part of that was a catch-up of subsidies to the wastewater and the Cave Creek Water Funds. It was budgeted to pay those subsidies during fiscal year 23, but for some reason, I don't know why, those weren't actually recorded. So in the fiscal year 24, we were catching up on those subsidy amounts. Within the governmental funds, so we have a variety of reserve categories. The non-spendable portion is 1.1 million. There's advances for basically a cash deficit in the Desert Hills Water Fund that in our pool of our cash and investments, they're essentially borrowing from other funds. So that was about 369,000 to cover that deficit in that cash pool. The prepaid items, about 750,000 there, 736,000 of that was for the fire engine. So those amounts are considered non-spendable because there isn't actual money to spend on anything that we would want to use for. Going down on this, this first column here, so then the, the next level on the fund balances is what is restricted. Restricted means that there is something outside of us that restricts how it is required to be spent, whether it's based off of some agreements, some covenants, legal, whether it's state statutes or federal rules. So there was about 286,000 that there was outside influences restricting those monies. And the biggest part of that was the HERF money of 229,000. Going to the next column over, so the committed fund balances, those are amounts that council has committed at the highest level, which is basically an ordinance. So there's some ordinance saying that those amounts have to be spent in a certain way. There was 5.2 million of that. There was the open space money of about 1.5 million that was prior allocations of sales tax revenues that has been accumulating interest earnings since that ordinance was changed, but no additional sales tax monies are going there. And then the capital projects monies that are in the water infrastructure fund, based off of that ordinance, was about 3.7 million. The next level down, so the assigned fund balances are things where they have been earmarked, but there is no ordinance saying that it has to be done that way. So it's, it's more just decision-making of how to spend the monies. During the fiscal year 24 budget process, the budget had 22.8 million set aside as capital reserves in the general fund. So that's where that came from. And then the, the next level is essentially unassigned fund balance that is just there, not necessarily earmarked for anything. And so within the general fund, 7.2 million. The general fund had transfers to and from other funds. The amount going to other funds, so general fund was able to transfer 1.8 million. As I had mentioned, there was some catch up of some subsidies. So for the wastewater fund, there was 1.3 million of catch up on subsidies. And then for the fiscal year 24 portion, that was about 324,000. So a significant decrease for the year in how much it has needed to be.
Explain to catch up for prior years.
So that was amounts that had not been recorded in prior years of the subsidies to the fund. Even though they were budgeted, for some reason, they weren't recorded. So in order in order to make that whole, and we're going to talk about the wastewater fund here in just a minute. So Cave Creek Water, so there was about 137,000 transferred to catch up on the subsidies there. There was no amount, so if if the subsidy transfers had been done previously, then there would have been no need for a transfer to Cave Creek Water for fiscal year 24, is essentially what this is telling you. And then a small amount to the grants and other restricted, which was basically correcting the allocation of the Smart and Safe Arizona monies that had been put in the general fund when they are supposed to be earmarked separately based off a state statute. The transfer from other funds, so the ordinance that allocates a half cent to the spur cross fund then says after whatever is needed for the maintenance of spur cross, 100,000 goes to trails. And then the remainder is split 50/50 between the general fund and the water infrastructure fund. So with the 100,000 for trails and the split of the 50/50, that ended up being 1.2 million going into the general fund. The next three slides are all taking the budgetary comparison for the general fund. And I've kind of broken it up. So this first slide is focusing on the revenues. And so you can see that what was budgeted for revenues in the general fund, 13.7 million. What we actually received was 14.2, so a positive variance there of about half million or 4%. Looking at the the details there, the sales tax was under budget 11%. And that was because of the correction in how the sales tax amounts were being allocated between the the funds. The licenses and permits line, so that one was one of the other significant ones. It was exceeded budget about half million or 117%. And that, I believe, was looked to me like very conservative estimates on building permits. And I know that there is thoughts of some of the activity that we've seen on the construction side is probably going to be going down. That was probably what led to the conservative nature in that. Another one of the large differences here was in the investment income line. So it was a positive variance of almost 900,000 within the general fund, 165% increase over the year before. And again, that was related to the interest rates being higher than what was anticipated. The next slide, so within the general fund budgetary comparison, this focuses on the expenditure side. So expenditures were budgeted at 17 million, actual amount spent was 14. So 3 million under what was actually budgeted for the general fund or 18%. The unused portion of the contingency, about 716,000. So contingency before we did our budget transfers was budgeted originally at about 1.2. And so this reflects some of those transfers to some of the various departments. Of the more significant ones, so legal services was budgeted about 350,000. Actual spent was 91,000, so 74% under budget. But there's a placeholder that is budgeted within legal services in case there's a need for any legal settlements. Development Services was about 400,000 under budget or 18%. And within Development Services, it was primarily capital related. There was a canceled trailhead project and delays in pedestrian pathway project. And then coming to Public Works, so Public Works was 1.2 million under budget or 39%. There were some of the CIP projects that did show some savings and how much was anticipated would be spent, and then delays in other projects that did not get started. So continuing with the general fund budgetary comparison. So the net of the revenues and expenditures, from a budgetary basis, it was estimating that expenditures would exceed revenues by 3.6 million. It was really only about 70,000 that expenditures exceeded the revenues. The transfers between the funds, so they were higher than what was originally anticipated. The beginning fund balance for the general fund was estimated at the time of budget at 29 million, but we were better off than that at 31.8 million. So the net impact, the budget had originally thought that we would decrease fund balance by about 3.6 million to 25 million. The decrease was 667,000, so going down to 31.2 million. Any questions there on the general fund? All right, so I'm going to move on to the proprietary funds. So this is our utility funds. Looking at the expenses, so from a fund basis, they went from 11.1 million in total to 10.7 million or a decrease of about 400,000 or 3%. The biggest decrease there, so in the orange slice of the pie, so Cave Creek Water was 5.7 in the prior year, 5.3 million in fiscal year 24, decrease of about 400,000 or 7%. And I always hate having to explain all these accounting things that aren't really understandable with people who they don't deal with accounting on a day to day basis. But essentially in fiscal year 23, there was an accounting entry that was done to write off a CIP project that did not result in an actual capital asset. So it was capitalized to begin with. And then in fiscal year 23, they said, oh, we got to write this off because it's not going to end up being capitalized now. So there was a write off of about a half million dollars that's included in that piece of the pie. There was a project, and now I'm forgetting quite what that was. But it had to do with, there was some design that was done. And then the results of that identified other projects that should be done instead of the one that was originally anticipated. What was that? Do you remember what that was for, Sean? I've drawn a blank on what that was. Was it related to wells? I forget. Basically, you have the same thing explanation here when you look at by the various categories. So on the cost of sales and services, that's where in fiscal year 23, that write off was reflected. So the cost of sales and services decreased 400,000 or 4%.
So you have a non-cash item in there, depreciation?
Yes.
So we track?
It was a slight increase from 1.8 million to 1.9 million.
Okay. I'm just surprised, that's the only non-cash thing I can think of in our entire. Is there, are there any other non-cash items?
That would be the most significant. Others are very minor. For the revenue side of the proprietary funds, looking at them based off of funds, so going from 12.5 million total to 15.8, that was an increase of 3.4 million or 27%. As most of you are aware, there was a rate study done, so that is part of the answer in some of this. So the wastewater revenues went up 600,000 or 19%. Some of it was related to the corrections in the allocations of the sales tax. That was about 400,000 of that change. And then 200,000 was a result of the rate increases. The Cave Creek Water revenues increased 2.2 million or 36%. This was primarily related to grant funding that was recognized. There was the the COVID relief monies, the sliffer monies, the 2.2 million that was used towards the Phoenix Interconnect. And then there was a Watersmart grant that was about 200,000 of was used during fiscal year 24 for the changeover to smart meters. For Desert Hills Water, that increased about 600,000 or 18%. And that was due to the rate increases. Looking at this from the perspective of the revenues based off of source. So operating revenues went up about a half million or 5% related to those those rate increases. Sales tax went up about 400,000 or 20% due to that correction in the allocations. The investment earnings was practically nothing in fiscal year 23, went to about 200,000 in fiscal year 24 with a 3,782% increase. That was not only due to the higher interest rates than what was anticipated, but the there was higher cash balances because they're starting to have some of that positive numbers there with the rate increases. Capacity fees went up about 100,000 or 40%. And that was related to the increases in the capacity fee rates. And then there were no grant revenues in fiscal year 23, so the 2.2 million in fiscal year 24, which was due to the Phoenix Interconnect and the smart meters. I have here, looking at the fund balances, the equity accounts for the proprietary funds in two different ways. There's the budgetary fund balances, and then there's the GAAP basis look at things. So from a budgetary perspective, the wastewater fund in fiscal year 23 had a deficit balance of 1.3 million. And we essentially brought that up to a zero balance with the catch up of the subsidies in order to balance that out. So the Cave Creek Water Fund increased about 200,000 or 17%. Again, that was due to the catch up in the subsidies from the general fund. Desert Hills went up about 100,000 or 41%, and that was primarily the rate increases. When we look at the net position, so the biggest category here within the proprietary funds is this category called net investment and capital assets. This is essentially looking at what your capital assets are and offsetting that number with how much do you still owe on them? So all the outstanding debt. So a little more complicated than that, but that's the the primary of what's going on there. So that increased 5.9 million or 15%. The biggest part of that is going to be related to the pay down on the debt that was outstanding, 4.2 million. But there was also in addition to capital assets of 1.7 million. The unrestricted in fiscal year 23 was a negative 400,000, went up to 1.5 million in fiscal year 24, so it's an increase of 1.8 million or 19%. 1.5 million of that was related to catch up of the general fund subsidies. And then half million was related to rate increases. So looking at the wastewater fund, the budget summary there, the revenues were 10% over what the budget amount was, so about 350,000 there. That was the correction of the sales tax allocations, about half million was for that. Expenditures were close within the budget, 5%. And the transfers in the other funds, so including that catch up to eliminate this deficit balance. The way that the numbers were rounded within the ACFR, the audited financial statements, it showed that as a $2 deficit. In reality, when you look at unrounded numbers, we brought it to exactly zero. Questions on the wastewater fund?
So the revenues are 3.4 million, the expenditures are 4.3, so we're roughly $900,000. That's a 74 in the hole.
That was what was budgeted.
And we only wound up 324,000 in the hole, so we were a half million bucks
Correct.
ahead as far as the financial operation of the wastewater system.
Yes, so the transfer of the 1.6 million was catch up of the subsidies of 1.3. And then for the current year, about 300,000, so significantly.
From accounting. So the performance was good, the accounting caught up?
Yes. Okay. For a Cave Creek Water Fund, so the revenues were less than budgeted by about 1.2 million or 13%. The water usage revenues were less than anticipated by about 600,000 when the budget was prepared. And I'm hopeful that that was related to conservation efforts within the community. But I also think there might have been a little bit of, a little more aggressive estimation within the budget revenues. Grant revenues also impacted that. So the amount of grant revenues that were budgeted compared to how much was actually recognized were 800,000 less in the actual numbers than what was budgeted. Expenditures were 65.
What's missing here, and maybe you're going to get to it, so just tell me. The performance, I mean, you've got capital expenditures mixed with operating expenditures one time and ongoing. And so you have, we have no idea what the what the performance was and whether we've got enough money in the in the rate structure. Is, are you going to go over and manage the performance?
I tried to keep this at a high level summary level. But when you look at the operational side of, from a budgetary perspective for Cave Creek Water, it was about 268,000 more than what was budgeted.
Is that good or bad? So we, are we cash positive on the operating performance of the water, of the Cave Creek Water Fund? Water operations?
So.
I would call that operating income.
When you look at it from like the business perspective, the operating income or loss, so we were a positive of about a half million in Cave Creek Water.
This stuff is great for accounting, but it tells us nothing about the performance, the financial performance of these proprietary funds. We've got to get where we get the one time expenses below the line. I thought we had that corrected five years ago, it's back. So what I want to know is, are those funds throwing off cash X the capital expenditure? Just like we would in in a business, just like business, that's the way that it's done in business.
Yes, yes.
An operating income, and then have the 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 finance aspects of the capex and the financing of the bonds that we're paying off below the line. So we can tell whether those funds, those businesses are being operated in a financially appropriate manner from an operating basis, not not the capex and not the bond payoff.
Okay. So we are doing at this point in time, a fair amount of capital projects that are pay as you go using some of that cash that is being generated by the operations to help cover those costs.
Yeah, it's going to be like that forever, but but we can't judge. It misses accounting if we we cannot judge the performance, the financial performance of those companies without that operating information, operating income information.
Yeah, yeah. So that is within the ACFR on page 32.
I have kind of a related question. So if we did not use as much water or sell as much water as we thought we were going to, is the assumption that we banked that excess water?
You could go to the microphone. I think some of it is a budgetary estimation and maybe a little more aggressive than what was realistic.
Okay. So we probably banked most of it, but not all of it. So we probably banked most of it, but not all of it.
Yeah, if if it wasn't used, then it would have had to been banked, right?
Went to ranch on Manana.
On the expenditure side, so expenditures were 65% under budget. Pretty significant because of capital improvement projects. So capital improvement projects were not proceeding as they were budgeted by 16.9 million. We have changed, and we talked about this in the retreat, some of the way that we're going to be doing some of this. Instead of budgeting for the entire project in year one, when it's a multi year project. It gives us a better look at where things stand if we budget more along the lines of how much we think will actually happen in year one. The WIF alone, so the the very large project here within cave creek water for capital was Phoenix interconnect. The WIF alone was not drawn down from during fiscal year 24. That didn't start happening until the current fiscal year. And so the beginning fund balance that was budgeted was almost 3.5 million. Really where it was at was about 1.1 because some of those transfers to help with the subsidies were not done. The ending fund balance budgeted, the 1.36, 336 million. So that is the number that we targeted when we did the subsidies, because that was the required amount that we had to have in the debt service reserve for the WIF alone. The I have not heard if from back from WIF, if it will be on the board meeting for this month or for the the board meeting for next month. But we are expecting them to release us from having that debt service reserve, so that would free up that 1.3 million.
Sherry, the numbers I was talking about earlier are on page 32. Yeah, thank you.
The desert hills water. So again, the estimation of the revenues, I believe they have been a little little aggressive on what that was. We were 16% under 700,000 in the water usage revenues. So maybe some conservatism there, but also potentially just a little aggressive in the numbers. On the expenditure side, we were 19% under budget within the desert hills. Again, largely because of capital improvement projects, that was about 600,000 of that. And desert hills water did have some contingency money in there, about 300,000 that was not used. So here on this one, there was no subsidy that was being done. That was, I believe, a direction from council in previous years that they didn't want to have to subsidize desert hills water. And so that was reflected in some of those rate increases. The 466,000 ending fund balance for desert hills, it reflects the amount that is required for the debt service reserve. So you see at the 480,000, they were a little bit more than what their debt service reserve was, so a little bit on the positive there, so that was a good thing. Moving on to looking at our debt, our long term obligations. So we went from 30.6 million obligations outstanding in fiscal year 23 to 26.5 in fiscal year 24. Decrease of 4.1 million or 13%. This is due to scheduled payments that were to be made. Private placement bonds went down 22.1 million or 16% because of those debt service payments. And the WIF loans went down 2.1 million or 18% because of those scheduled payments. I also like to point out the pledged revenue coverage. So we have pledged revenues to be able to repay these. For desert hills, the WIF loans there that are pledged with the desert hills revenues, the coverage is 2.56 times. What the covenants require is 1.5 times, so that's actually pretty decent on the desert hill side. Cave Creek water is a little closer, so it's required at 1.5, they're 1.55 times. And we've had enough years in a row of being just above the 1.5. Which is why the board is looking at releasing our debt service reserve for us. For the WIF loans that we are using excise taxes as pledged revenues and the private placement bonds. Those are quite a bit higher than the required 1.5, we're at 6.45 times, so in a very good position there. Looking at our cash investments, they did go up a little bit. We went from 40.4 million to 40.6 million, increase is 128,000, less than 1%. So looking at TPT revenues in total, so the governmental funds and the portion that gets recorded in the wastewater fund. So we can look at total numbers here, we went from 13.1 million to 13.2. It's about a $52,000 increase, so less than 1%, so we were essentially flat. When you look at these charged based off of by fund, so general fund went down 7% from the 9.5 million to the 8.8. And the two half cents for spur cross and wastewater went up the 20%. This is because of that reallocation in how they were recorded. So we had talked previously about how the half cent was not being properly reflected in how much of the construction. TPT monies were coming in should be allocated and bed tax was being allocated, but it shouldn't have been.
Sherry, if you go back to that last slide, inflation that in those between those two years is about 5% more. How does your TPT?
I have a slide that'll show you.
Okay. I'm not surprised.
So because we're doing these transfers, I thought it would be helpful to take a look at how much was the money recorded in the funds? And then the resulting transfers, so spur cross transfers, anything left over 5050 between the general fund and the water infrastructure fund. So when you take the amount that was in general fund recorded directly there and then the transfer from spur cross. Then there is still a slight decrease in the general fund, about 300,000 or 3%. Because of some catch up in the allocations within spur cross. It actually was reflected a decrease because there was money sitting there in the spur cross that didn't get allocated in previous years that we caught that up. Water infrastructure, so with that change in the allocations that 50%. That goes from spur cross into the water infrastructure went up about 363,000 or 48%. And then wastewater went up the 20% that we talked about before, 370,000. So here's your information based off of category, and this is looking at taxable sales, not the revenue. Which is what the GFOA, the Government Finance Office Association wants us to report within our statistical section. I have the reference here on page 107. So as you can see, the taxable sales went up about 2%. So from 406 million to 413 million is 7 million increase. And you can see with construction, which is at the 5% tax rate. The taxable sales went down about 9 million, so a decrease of 18%. Our largest category, though, retail trade went up about 10 million or 4%. So that's a little more reflective of what you were expecting on an inflationary increase, I believe. That category would be reflected at the 3%. Any questions there? Okay. So that's what I have for you, if there's any other questions related to the ACF. Or anything related to the audit that I can answer, I'd be happy to do so.
Anyone? Questions? Thank you, Sherry, it seems like every time you bring something here, you found a little something else to to fix.
Yeah, I have done a little bit of that.
Thank you very much, and I I want to compliment you on on correctly. Orienting me on what the legislature was looking at. You were 100% right with that meeting and they had all the numbers right at their fingertips, just as you thought they might.
Yes. They're great, Sherry, we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the audit committee portion of the meeting and continue with our regular agenda. Our consent agenda, we have the approval of December 2nd, 2024, regular town council meeting minutes. Approval of the December 16th, 2024, regular town council meeting minutes. Council discussion, possible approval of the 2025 regular town council meetings and holiday calendar. And this was discussed at our retreat. So does anybody have anything that they would like to ask questions or further information? Okay, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, carry 7-0. General agenda items, we have the council discussion, possible approval to accept an offer of membership. Into the Arizona Metropolitan Trust for Health Accident Life and or Disability Benefits for eligible town employees. By adopting resolution number R 2025 dash 04, appoint a trustee and an alternate trustee and authorizing the mayor to execute the trust agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to explore this offer of membership into the Arizona Metropolitan Trust. And I do have a representative of the Arizona Metropolitan Trust here, I'll let her introduce herself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jamie Schulenberg, I'm with Gallagher Benefit Services. I act as the pool administrator for the Arizona Metropolitan Trust since its inception on 7/1/2012. So I've been with them since they were born.
So this does tie into the strategic plan and we were directed about a year ago to start looking into our employee benefits a little bit more aggressively. One of the things we're doing is researching the market. And this is where we are here today, based on that research, but it does support fiscal sustainability. Implement fiscally sustainable initiatives that allow the town to proactively plan for, recruit, grow and retain top human resources. So again, this was tied to the benefit study recommendations and we're here tonight to present you a little bit more data on what we found. Those are the performance measures, we'll skip past those. So basically, you want to join a trust, it does spread the costs among more bodies. Our current life support is 47 representatives, but with the trust that expands exponentially just about. So when we have a risk of an employee with cancer treatment, for example, it really has impacted our rates. Our rate increases every year have been at least in the double digits. And by making that pool a larger pool, it kind of mitigates that risk for the town. So rising healthcare costs have also tied into that, but these are the reasons that we are kind of looking at joining the trust. Grady is a former trustee of this same trust from a former employer and has some vast experience on the backside. Little bit about Arizona Metropolitan Trust and Jamie can expand on this if she chooses to. As she noted, she's from Gallagher Benefit Services, they're an experienced public entity pool administrator. The actuarial services are provided by Chiron, another leading expert in Arizona public employee benefits. Claims administration provided by Ameribank, a leading third party claims administrator. And legal counsel provided by premier employee benefits attorney, Michael Hensley. So we have a a great staff behind this trust. So some of the reasons again to join the trust, we talked about economies of scale. Mitigating the cost inflames claims fluctuation, it's being reduced over now a larger pool of bodies. Purchasing power, this plan has better ability to negotiate with outside vendors. Current our current health plan premiums for this year compared to what we would have been charged if we were in the trust. Depending on which plan the employees in are 28% to 56% higher than current ASMT rates. Out of pocket maximums for our employees would also be lower under the ASMT plan. The ASMT benefit plan, and this is a term that's thrown out by the actuarial. 6.5% richer for the PPO plan, which is kind of like your co pay plan. 3.5% richer for the high deductible health plan. And does provide also an option, a buy up dental option that provides $2,500 more in annual dental benefits per plan year. Our current plan, you get a crown and a root canal and you're pretty much done with your benefits for the year. So this expands on that, especially for families with kids with orthodontic needs. And it also does provide adult orthodontia, which our current plan did not. So there are four different tiers or medical plans offered into the Blue Cross Blue Shield Provider Network. Blue Cross Blue Shield is also a wide provider network. There are two dental plan offerings using the Delta Dental Network, which is our current network, just with better benefit coverage. Two vision plans, again, using our current network, but one is a buy up plan that gives you a little bit extra coverage if you choose. And employer provided life insurance at twice the employee annual salary. Our current plan option limits you to one time your annual salary, which doesn't really help the survivors of a family too much, not that we want anybody to die. But it's always good to know that your family is planned for. And wellness program was a huge thing that council had pointed out as a deficiency, we did expand that to a bit. But the wellness program through ASMT is pretty robust and maybe Jamie can speak to a few of the offerings under that wellness program.
Sure, I'd be happy to, so we work in a team environment at Gallagher and so you would actually have an assigned, again, the pool administrator. There's an account manager who works with me on the day to day and there's also an actual wellbeing consultant who brings forward various programs to all of our member entities. Our largest offering is our onsite screening, so we bring forth mammograms, flu shots, skin cancer screenings, things of that nature. Right to your doorstep, they can have those screenings done here in a mobile unit. They're paid for 100% under our plan. In addition to that, we have, oh my goodness, it was called Virgin Pulse, now it's Personify Health, which is a digital wellness program. That's tailored to each person's specific interests, they go in and fill out kind of an interest survey. And they get daily cards that teach them new things and they can do different journeys and learn about cholesterol or weight management or exercise. Plethora of topics, I mean, there's so many, it's crazy. And they can earn points for participating in all these various things, which they can then use for to purchase items off of a storefront offered through Personify. We are adding. Health coaching through that Personify network effective 7/1 as well. So we're constantly looking at growing the program, we do provide each of our member entities within Arizona Metro with a. Entity dollars that they can use to supplement the wellness program, either through additional incentives or additional programming perhaps. Things like that, so it's again fairly robust and we're always looking at how to make that better and increase participation and so forth.
Thank you, Jamie, that that she was not expecting that, so I threw under the bus right away. Moving on to the rate comparison, this this would be for this current fiscal year. We did just receive renewal increases from ASMT, they're proposing a 4.5% increase. Kairos has not yet extended what their renewal would be, historically, it has been in the double digits, the last five years have been in the double digits.
Is this a monthly rate here?
This is the monthly rate, yes. It's not the split with the employee employer, but this is just the total premium. As you can see, there's a huge difference. So some of the disadvantages and the underwriting guidelines for ASMT do cap the employer funding for health savings accounts to 50% of the deductible. Currently, Cave Creek has been funding 100% of that. We do have ways that we can offset that impact to employees who choose the high deductible plan. We've talked about the buy up options for dental, we may change our premium cost sharing model just a tad. So the employees are kept as whole as possible on the on the transition. We're also going to be offering the buy up on the PPO plan, which is like the co pay plan. Which for people who like the predictability of co pays and not having to deal with out of pocket maximums and and the HSA possible, they may they may choose that option. We do have a couple of employees this year who did choose the PPO that we offered for that predictability in their budget. for that predictability in their budget. So dental and vision premiums under ASMT are actually slightly higher, but it's by like a couple dollars a month, which is not significant, but they do offer more plan coverage. So again, I mentioned the $1,500 cap we have on dental versus the $4,000 on the buy-up for the Delta Dental under this plan. That's a lot more coverage, like I said, currently one root canal and one crown, and you're done for the year. So at least you'd have a little more flexibility in your dental benefits. I mean, many of us have planned like in June to do something, and then in a new fiscal year to do something else, just because we didn't have quite enough benefits to cover, and we didn't want to pay it all out of pocket either. So staff is recommending the approval of the resolution accepting membership into the Arizona Metropolitan Trust for the enhanced benefits for town personnel and a projected $1 million in premium cost savings over the next four years. Based on the differential for this year, and based on the current enrollment and the types of plans that employees were enrolled in, it would come to about $268,000 per year. With the differential on the rate increases, we're projecting that it would probably be over $300,000 in savings because of the differential in the rate increases and the current rate structure. So, any questions?
Questions?
Mayor Morris, thank you. Just a question about, does the trust require participation in health metrics for employees on an annual basis?
It's not required. We do offer health risk assessments, which provide those metrics, but it is not a required component. Having said that, we do have flexibility within our memberships. So if the town of Cave Creek wanted to do something like that, we could work with you on implementing.
And how about pre-employment screenings, anything?
We do not offer pre-employment screenings.
And one other question, right now on your list, you had nine member entities. How much has that number gone up and down in the trust? Are there groups that have left the trust, and if so, for what reasons?
We've had three entities leave the trust, I'm sorry, four. The first left for a, they had a change in their, their leadership and went to a fully insured product. And I can tell you, because they're a current client, they've had double-digit increases ever since. We had two others leave because they were larger entities, and they felt like they could manage the program better as a single entity versus being kind of the big fish in, or the big fish in the little pond type of a situation. Both also have experienced large increases since leaving. And then the third, or the fourth, excuse me, actually is just leaving, or just left at the end of last year, and it was a natural fire district that moved into a fire-specific trust.
Thank you.
I had kind of a similar question. I was curious about who the members are. Are they municipalities primarily?
Yeah, so it's, it's open for cities, towns, counties, fire districts, and other political subdivisions within Maricopa, Pima, and Pinellas Counties. Our current membership is the City of Apache Junction, City of El Mirage, I have to do it in my head alphabetically, Fountain Hills, Town of Guadalupe, Litchfield Park.
So smaller municipalities, am I right?
Yes, yes, they tend to be smaller, yes.
Wickenburg.
Wickenburg, yes. Sun City Fire District, Youngtown.
That's good, thank you.
Who owns your company? I mean, is it a private company, or is it a?
So I just work for Arizona Metropolitan Trust. They hired me as their pool administrator, so.
Who is?
Arizona Metropolitan Trust is made up of all of its member entities, and that is, that's who owns it.
Okay.
So if Cave Creek were to approve this resolution, you would become an owner of this insurance company, Arizona Metropolitan Trust, in addition to its other nine entity members.
Essentially, you're a nonprofit.
Yes.
It, exactly. We comply with all Arizona open meeting laws requirements, have to do public noticing and meetings. The beauty of this is that it's a very transparent operation. The other thing that, where I worked previously, as you know, I was in Fountain Hills, and we were in the predecessor to the group that we're in currently, right now. And it didn't have one member, one vote in that group. You elected a executive board, which just had three members. And what the beauty of this membership is, each of the entities that belong are part of the Board of Directors, and they vote on plan design changes. There's even occasions when you may have to go into an e-session to review an appeal for a benefit that an employee didn't feel like they should have had coverage for, or was denied. So the nice thing about this is I just think that you don't typically see this with medical insurance. You, you have a group that, you know, we're all there for our own organizations and representing our organizations, but you're trying to do the better, or the, the, you're trying to work and do the best for the entire group. And so we joined when I was in Fountain Hills in 16, and they're still there. And again, they've saved probably close to $2 million in the time period that they've been there. And it's, the other thing to point out, we currently have United Healthcare as our network. It's very good, you know, it's, it's very good. But I would tell you, everybody that I've ever known that's ever had Blue Cross Blue Shield always thinks it's kind of the gold standard in, in Arizona and other states. This current year, we have Delta Dental, we switched over. We were in a prepaid plan, nobody ever heard of before last year when I first started, so we made that change. We also, for the first time in many, many years, offered a PPO plan through our current provider, because I think it's important to give employees choice, and that kind of came out in the survey, that our benefits survey and administrator did, not administrator, but the consultants did. So this comes highly recommended. I think that, as you can see, this isn't just about savings, but we're actually getting better insurance coverage. And I mean, that's just unheard of. I mean, it's just, let's be honest, that's not something you would expect. The one thing that is a downside, there's, there's two downsides. One is we're going to have to reduce our health savings account, the contribution the town makes, and the reason for that, and I can let Jamie enumerate on that, but you don't want to fully fund the health savings accounts because you have two different extremes that happen with it. You either have employees that hoard the money, and they don't seek healthcare when they need it, or you have them fully utilizing their health insurance because it's fully paid for by the employer. And so that, that causes utilization to go up, which then translates into higher rates or premiums. So this is why the actuary was concerned, and it's funny because, as I mentioned, where I worked previously, we were in the same group that we're in now, basically. And it was the same thing. We were, at that time, fully funding the HSA, and we had to reduce the HSA contribution in order to join because it would cause a problem for the whole group to be that way. So, I don't know if I said that right, or.
Absolutely.
And then one thing to point out too, is the resolution actually would appoint Grady as the trustee. Each agency or member has the same one vote, so everyone's equal. It's not like the House of Representatives, based on population.
Other questions? Anything else left to ask? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution R 2025-04, accepting membership in the Arizona Metropolitan Trust commencing July 1st, 2025, appointing Grady E. Miller as trustee and Carla R. Reese as alternate trustee and authorizing the mayor to execute documents between the town of Cave Creek and the Arizona Metropolitan Trust.
Second.
Okay, this, listen, roll call.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman? Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Orton? Base Member Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Looks like a win-win-win-win-win. Okay, next on the agenda is council discussion approval of a contract with Phoenix Water Systems to install water meters in the Cave Creek water system for an amount not to exceed $248,935, and authorize the town manager's staff to execute the necessary contract documents.
You need any mayor and council? So before I start, Nick Larson has been actually championing a lot of this work. So if there's any questions to come up to your presentation, he can answer the more technical details because he did most of the work, so I've given him credit for that. And then we actually have Luke Sharman from Phoenix Water Solutions in the audience, if you have any questions.
Welcome.
So with that, Ryan, can you bring up the slideshow? Okay. So this is, we're at the end of the, the water meter changeout program for Cave Creek. This is the Watersmart grant that we applied for almost two years ago, and we put it in as a project, total budget of just over, just under $1.1 million when we put that estimate together. It's actually a grant being administered through the Bureau of Reclamation. We put it in as a way for us to both, we, we knew some of the meters were failing and under-reporting water usage, and it actually allowed us to do the leapfrogging technology. What we have right now is a drive-by system, although some of the staff will say it's not drive-by because a lot of the meters have failed, and you actually have to stop and physically read them. So we actually do want to do that leap and upgrade of replacing the meters. We're metering properly for customer usage and going to an AMI system, automatic meter infrastructure. What does that mean? That means that we actually are getting signals from our meters, and we're collecting that data and actually sending it up, and I'll have a slide to show you what that looks like. The current meters that we do have in Desert Hills, the town went to Neptune meters in Desert Hills, have that capability. The problem we found out is we have two different versions of meters. So we have some older versions that don't really put out a strong enough signal. But again, this is really to deal with the Cave Creek water meters. We actually have supplementary capital projects for Desert Hills to do that later. And the grant was actually awarded last March to us. So what we've been doing for the last year is actually, we've purchased most of the meters that are needed to do the changeouts. While we have about 4,400, or 2,400 customers in Cave Creek water, because of the failures that have been occurring, we've actually already changed out about 700 just operationally over the last couple of years, just to get ahead of this game. So we still have about 1,600 meters still to install. And then we've actually had to go through a process with the federal government to get the collector sites, and they're actually the little, the radio collectors that actually are listening for these signals installed. That took about almost a year to get approval, to actually get the collector sites authorized, so we could set them up. So we have all five sites as of last week installed, and we're getting good data out of it already. So these are the five collector sites, so these are radio repeaters that we've selected and put up. One's at Rockaway, one we actually worked on in agreement that council approved was with the library. So we're on the roof of the library. That's a solar-powered installation, it's very neat. One's a Galloway booster, just to help get some meters on the east side of town. Our Carriage Two booster is actually up on the side of the hill, so we're getting really good data out of that, and we just installed the one at the rodeo ground. So with that, we actually have very good coverage. We expect to get over 80% of the meters covered by these collectors, so they'll be able to listen to them. The other 20% will actually have to have a little cellular antenna that sends the signal up, and we get the data that way. Yeah, it's more expensive that way, but it's actually, because of our topography, we'd have to install a lot more collector sites, and it's not really practical for us. So what are we getting out of this system right now? When we, as soon as we installed the rodeo grounds, our, our numbers jumped up from about 750 meters that we were seeing data from to the 10,084. So we're seeing 37% of our Neptune meters, which is about 25% of our overall accounts. This, we're actually seeing meters in Desert Hills are certainly get picked up by the system, so it's kind of, and we're actually seeing hourly data for most of those meters. So when you see that, the AMI system, this is actually the dashboard that we get out of the Neptune information. We're gathering a lot of information. The one thing, staff is still learning how to best utilize the system because we get a lot of data, and at the sort of bottom center there, you see current consumption flags. So the meters will tell you if there's something wrong, and someone's getting a continuous water usage. It could be a small leak, it could be a toilet valve, valve isn't leaking, or leaking by, you're getting a couple gallons a minute. The meters are actually sending out some information to us. So as we gather that information, we've been successful right now, working with Sheri's staff. We actually have reached out to some people to actually tell them about some stuff that we've seen. So we're trying to get that going, and that's one of the benefits we see of this system. Instead of waiting for someone to have a leak, and we send them out a water bill that could be potentially six weeks later after the meters start before they see it, we can give more real-time data to them. So we're seeing ourselves, and we're being able to inform the customers on the system. So at this point, as I mentioned, we have about 1,600 meters still to install to make the system whole. We put out a bid package in January 29th. We received seven bids. They're in your package. It might look a little odd because we actually, at the time, we were still working with the Department of Labor to figure out which labor rate, this being federally funded grant, federally funded grant, we actually have to follow the Davis Bacon Prevailing Wage Act. And we actually got conflicting information even while we had the solicitation out. So it wasn't until we actually, just before the award, that we got clarification on which one we could use. We asked bidders to actually give us the two alternates. Not everyone elected to do that, but Phoenix Water Solutions did, and they gave us a bid of just under $250,000 to do the work. That does include some allowances. We want to do this as a one-time. We need to get it done. We actually have to complete the work before June 30th to meet our transaction date for our federally funded grants, even though this grant we were told about a couple of years ago, rewarding it. And ironically, they've sort of delayed the process. They still have this hard deadline in June, June 30th. We've been told that that's not, not going to be an issue for the contractor to get that one done. There was some work, some additional with the amount of money involved, because we did the estimate two years ago. We did have to transfer about $66,000 currently into the budget. We're, we're moving some other monies from another capital project over. That's in order to give us the funding to complete it. We're hopeful that because of our allowances, we don't have to spend it all, so we won't use all that money, but we need the appropriation available in order to authorize this contract tonight. So the item is actually to ask council to authorize a contract with Phoenix Water Solutions to complete the installation of the Cave Creek water meters, to both replace the existing meters, which we, we believe are under-reporting, as I mentioned in quarterly reports before, are currently are what we call the non-billing rate is, we're running about 13% in that we can't account for 13% of our customer usage. We expect this to get us down below 10%, if not lower than that, and actually also advance the town into an AMI system. We're getting hourly data that actually sets us up so we can actually, while we're already seeing some Desert Hills customers, to allow us to expand the system. So hopefully, in the next few years, everything is automated, and the point that we're actually getting much more better, much more accurate data from the customers, both for the billing and then when leaks occur and everything else. So then we start looking at overall water efficiencies and usages in the system. So with that, we can answer any questions council may have.
Questions from council? I have a number. When will we have a robust and process to actually take advantage of this information so that it results in savings? When will that be ready to go? And when it is, I'd like to see it presented to council, how we're going to use this to actually save money on, under reporting meters, and actually to save gallons on alerting people to leaks and things so that they don't use so much water. So how are you going to? How and how much are you going to save when spending this, after spending this money?
In the grant application, we thought we could save somewhere between 5% and 10% of, of water consumption by getting this. And part of that is because we're underbilling customers right now. We've, we've been testing meters, and we're underreporting that. The overall system will, one of the things that we're going to actually roll out with this project is actually, we look at what's called the Neptune 360. That's the software that we look at and see the entire system. Customers will be able to access the system called My 360, where a customer can now log in. They can set their own parameters, so say someone's going away, or they get an alert, even if they're there, they can set their alerts, so when they're getting a high water usage. So customers are going to be enabled and able to see this information. So as staff, we're still learning the system. Again, staff, we're looking at it, and we're trying to find customers that are having issues with the meters. We may need more staff resources, but it's actually taken away also because we're not having to do the drive-by right now. Again, this last month, it takes us about a day to drive around the system to read all the meters in Desert Hills. It takes two days to drive them all in Cave Creek. And right now, we're running about 120 meters that have either failed, or the radio transponders have failed. So staff then have to go back and read, manually read 120 meters right now. We've been in that situation since as long as I've been. Since as long as I've been here. So we're going to see some staff savings there. And then we are starting to see, we've already talked to some customers who have been able to, we've been able to see leaks occurring and stop them. So as far as mapping that all together, yes, we will have to come back with you with the successes of the program. You know, ironically, we're gonna, I think, we're gonna. Get some more billings out of customers, but I think there's actually going to be some elasticity there with that, when they actually see how much water they're actually using and they're into the higher rate tiers, they'll probably use less water. So we're going to see our, our fluctuations there that we would have normally expected, but we'll come back with some more hard data with you.
Well, we haven't had a lot of luck with having people on their own, just put data out there and they. Grab it and optimize their own situation. What are we going to do to identify high users? And a program to really take advantage of this, if necessary, educate them so that we get some actual savings. I haven't. You know, just reading the meters better, we could have done that by changing the meters and not putting into telemetry systems. Because we're, I'm sure we're under measuring water. That's the nature of, of water meters.
But it will be in education.
Going to actually save, I, I'm confident we'll save dollars. Because that, that's automatic in this accounting system. But I'm interested is how are we going to save gallons of water in reduced per residential or per business site consumption?
Overall, we're hopeful that as people see their usage and we can continue the conversation of water conservation, that people lower their, their consumption. We think the biggest advantage of this system is that we'll identify things like leaks earlier. So people can stop those leaks. One example that we recently had that we actually, the, we adjusted the, the policy. Towards overages is because we had someone that was out of state. They had a very significant leak on their property. Then this system could have caught and alerted them to where they had leaked a significant amount of water over a five day period and they ended up with a five thousand dollar water bill. So this system would have alerted to them to that rather than waiting till we showed up and said, oh, you've got a lot of water that went through your meter and here's your bill. So it's going to be proactive. We, we've already talked to Bo about how we do outreach to educate people. When we, we haven't released the my three sixty application where they can log into the system and do education. So they can go in there and they can set their parameters themselves. We do want to wrap that in the next few, our next few months, start getting that out to customers. It's, we're going to have to work on the qualitative results on that. I do suspect and what I've seen as staff have looked at the data daily, you know, we, we seem to find a meter every day that has a problem with it in that we think there's been continuous consumption logs or something like that. So we can reach out to the customer services reps. To reach out that person and say, hey, you might want to look some, we think.
And that's what I'm looking for. What kind of administrative day in someone's job is to find? High consumption and get it out. So we get those fixed out there to save gallons. What kind of processes are we going to put in place administratively? To, to save water using this, because I mean. Given what we're facing in the water situation, this is, this is cheap, but we need to take advantage of this million dollars we're spending. And have it actually show up on the bottom line, which is consumption per household. And of course. In fairness, that somebody whose meter is not reading right is taking advantage of those meters that are. Giving you the right numbers. So I'm looking for administrative. Actions that take advantage of this to lower consumption rates.
And it's foreshadowing in the budget process, we, we do believe with our staffing levels right now that we may need to add a staff position that, that helps us focus on this. It's been done, I hate to use the term ad hoc. Ryan Hill, who's actually on vacation right now, he's been spending a great amount of time. He looks at the system daily and he'll look at that. And if he sees some flags, he'll notify the customer service. People to reach out to it. We almost need someone more focused on that. And the larger agencies, you'd usually have a meter services group and they're looking at that daily. So.
Why don't we set up a, we need to go on Musk in here, maybe what, you know, you, you don't.
The system does.
All data, you can look at the data and send out emails. Don't we have a software that's going to look at this? Name's a software that can look for anomalies and send it out a notices and a follow up sheet? We don't, why do we need more?
Mary, you bring up some really good points. I was in Sean's office about three weeks ago and he was showing me a, a report that just shows like the high users. And I realize you're talking residential, which is eighty five percent of our accounts. But on the commercial side, we've got about. Four, five different ones that are huge that we could probably etch out. I would think probably a couple hundred acre feet a year. Because they're just, there's just ridiculous amounts of water that they're going through. One's a restaurant, one's a school and the other one's a church. And then we also have a, I believe it's a two hundred acre property. It's residential. Seems like they're pumping water as well as they're on portable water. And that's another one that I think we already are going to be talking to. To see what is it that they're doing that they need that kind of water? So those are, those are.
Those are outliers, but I'm looking at a, a, from now on administrative procedure that happens every day, every week, every month. To take advantage of all the money we're spending. And actually turn it into water because there's administrative stuff here.
Yeah.
And communications that it's an opportunity, but we ought to be taking advantage of it.
Yeah. As we learn the system, I do think the system has some set points in it. I do think right now we like the idea of the checks and balances that we look at it to see if there is an anomaly. Every time we run the high usage report right now, the waste, our water rant shows up as the highest water user. We're trying to correct that. That was actually part of our problem that we had with the reuse, the onsite reuse system wasn't functioning. So we, I don't know if we'll drop down, but that will lower down. Yeah, we're looking at how you set the parameters, how the system can send out automatic alerts or, or what we do with our current staff to, to contact that. So we are trying to optimize this. From talking with other agencies, it's sometimes hard. You have to see, see what those parameters are. Somebody like. Simple things like if someone has a pool with an auto pool filter, that can give you a spike consistently. The system needs time to actually generate the data to can look at trends. A lot of these customers, as we install the meters, we're going to get that first month, but usually you need three to four to five months worth of trending before you can actually get into it. So it'll take some time for it to grow the information. So it'll just get better with time, I think.
If it's not managed. So looking for management.
So Mary, the other thing that Sean and I've talked about, and, and it's Sherry as well, is we believe that we have a lot of outdated information on the billing system. So we're going to need to get updated emails. I don't believe that every account holder, for instance, has an email account set up with us. So those are all things that we're going to have to do some education and get information out to people. Reminding them through their utility billing and probably through what we do in our community newsletter about people, it's important for them to get their. Their contact information updated so that we can reach out to them if there is a problem. So, and that, that's the baseline of information you have to have in order to communicate.
What I'm looking for is a systematic written process to take advantage and save money with this, whatever it takes. Looking at the big users, looking at the small users. Getting email, requiring emails or something. I mean, but let's, what is it going to take and what kind? And I'd like to see it presented to council. So we know that we're taking advantage and we're getting serious about water, conserving water. We're looking for a process that happens every day and not just an ad hoc set of systems where somebody looks at it when they have time. Okay. So I'll make the motion. You have questions? I move to approve a contract with Phoenix Water System, install water meters and cave creek water system for an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty eight thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars. And authorize the town manager's staff to execute the necessary contract documents.
Second.
Hey, I have no, no more comments. You have a comment?
No, I think it, it moves the project along. That's already in process and we need to complete.
Other council members have comments? Okay, this is a roll call.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Disco?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion pass is seven zero and we're on to council discussion approval. Of cooperative processing, purchasing agreement with precision electric motor and pump services to rehabilitate and test two existing Cave Creek wells for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And to authorize the town manager and staff to execute the necessary contract documents.
Mayor and counsel. So we've talked to you before about this program and it goes back to the integrated utility master plan where we're showing that. Moving forward, we do expect to see a cut in Colorado River allocation to the town. So we're looking at solutions of short, mid and long terms to help us bridge those gaps. The town's water system, when the town purchased it had a number of wells, not very many, only a handful, I think were active at the time we purchased. And over time, we actually got to the point where only one was active until twenty eighteen. And then it was. Because of a casing issue stopped functionally working. So we haven't ran the well since twenty eighteen, any of the wells. But with the forthcoming shortages that we do anticipate, we do see the ground use of the town's wells and groundwater resources as a way to help supplement, not to long term manage the town's water resources. In the past, and even the, the private water company saw that the aquifer up here really doesn't sustain long term pumping. That's why in nineteen ninety, they went and got a CAP allocation and actually built a pipeline in the water treatment plant to get the town onto surface water. Now we're seeing the effects of what's happening with the surface water cuts. But we're trying to look at trying to bring some wells back online to help supplement. And in an emergency, we can utilize those wells. So in last fiscal year, we were able to test one well, it's called the right well at the plant site. We were able to get that tested out and cleaned out. We think we need to test out, or we'd like to test out another two wells to get some opportunities to try and balance that out. So we can split that load on the aquifer between different things, different sites. And we're trying to get the two extra wells tested before the end of this fiscal year, such that we've got money identified in next year's capital program to equip them. Equipping would be that we're going to clean the casings and do some pump down tests. And then that would give us the ability to set a pump. Criteria that next year, we can actually get the equipping done and we can actually tie these back into the distribution system and or just the well lines. Cause people might not be aware that while we have a water distribution system for our treated water, there's actually also in the town core, you know, we have our raw water CAP line, but there's a, there's actually a raw water well line that was constructed by Cave Creek Water. It was put in about the same time that the water treatment plant was built because they knew that they were trying to bring the water to the point that it could provide backup for the CAP canal. And actually help for water treatment at the same time. So we want to utilize that existing well and well line infrastructure that's in the town core. This is a picture of it. It used to extend up Schoolhouse Road, but we believe there's some damage to that section of the line, but we know through the town courts, it's, it's complete. Cause it was actually taking water from the Vermish well and sending it all the way to Rancho Manganas for a number of years. So again, the middle of the slide, you'll see the right well, that's the well at the water treatment plant we were able to test out last year. Initially, we were thinking of testing the Vermish well, but based on the water quality data, it was very high in arsenic. The arsenic levels were twenty times the, the threshold. We think the payway well and or the triangle or fairway wells. Or better options for us to test out and they are located close to the well lines. We can just bring that water together. So. Our goal is with this funding to actually test out of the three wells, triangle, fairway and payway. Pee wee wells to get one of, two, at least two of those tested out. So we can determine how they can work together with the right well. Back.
Can I ask, make a quick interruption or ask a question? If you could go back to the previous slide. On the, you call it the Pee wee well?
Yeah.
In the nineteen eighties, I was a Cave Creek water customer and we were getting gasoline in our kitchen sinks from water drawn from that well. And I know I've mentioned this issue before and I'm so sorry, but it appears obnoxious, but. Big Earl's used to be a gas station here in town and I don't believe we ever had a mitigation of the underground storage tank, which did leak. And the plume migrated south. And the town had closed those wells because of contamination from oil mill gasoline.
I actually. My, my, my understanding of the data is it was actually the, what was the now the Neri well, which has been abandoned completely and the well adjacent to Neri on, on East Valley Way, which is referred to as the. There is the office well. I believe those were the two wells that were impacted by that plume because they're the closest to that. I'm not sure if payway, I can't find any records that payway and or the Linda well, which is right across the street from it, were impacted by that. But that's one of the reasons we'll do the testing and we can check the water quality on that. Data set. But for my, looking at the records, it was actually the other two wells that were impacted, the Neri well and the office well.
And just a follow up question.
Yeah.
Is there any federal money left for mitigation? Should you find a recurrence of the plume in any of your wells in that location?
We haven't looked into that. So we had something we'd have to come, you know, obviously we, we have a project team that we've assembled because. Council has authorized us to work with, with Clear Creek and Associates and Black and Beach to look at the water quality. So I'm sure if there is something they'd be able to, a point is in that direction.
If, if there was water, there, there should be a super fund.
EPA does have a super.
Super fund to, to handle exactly this.
Yeah.
If, can we find out if, if that was, was remediated?
That's how they're cleaning up the well or cleaning up the. The spills that occurred over half a century in Oahu.
They, they were all over the country. There's hundreds of thousands of them probably.
Well, there's an existing site just south of Carefree Highway at the old landfill site. So the, the Maricopa County has been running the remediation program at that site, but we can investigate it. From my understanding, it was the right, the Neri well, which the casing's been fully abandoned. It's actually physically underneath where the new reservoir is. That was put in two thousand and eight and then the office well, which is actually not on our property, but it's, it's, and that's the other wells. But as we find more information about that, we can test that out. Again, the right well, which is just north of there. Tested out fine. We ran it for twenty four hours and the water quality came up good. And we understand that the Pee wee well was used when there is the. Beer making, the chili beer was being brewed. That was actually being used for that chili beer. But actually ironically, the site actually set up with two different electrical panels, depending on if they're running into the system or to the, to the brewery at the time. So.
Wasteless dumped in the wash right out back. That's another story.
I have a quick question. Have we contemplated how utilizing municipal wells, if we do, will impact domestic wells?
Yeah, we're thinking about that because I've talked to Clear Creek Associates. Right now the hydraulic model for the valley ends at Cave Creek or Carefree Highway. We could either try to develop one ourselves or another thing that we could do, it might be more practical is just to monitor our drawdown of the, of the, of the wells at our locations and then look at the adjacent wells to see if there's any wells. And we need property owners to give us permission. We can monitor their groundwater drawdown also. So that's something we'll probably look, if we do go move forward, at the minimum, we'd probably want continuous monitoring of our, of the groundwater table in our wells. So we can say, you know, we've only drawn it down ten feet or something like that, but we're not sure of the adjacent wells. Most of these wells we're looking at are only about three hundred feet deep. But the groundwater tables only is down around fifth, forty or fifty feet. So we have a fairly. Good section. We'll have to monitor that, but that's something we do, do want. I've heard that from council before. We would look at the adjacent, it's called the exempt wells. And we can, we'd have to talk to individual property owners if we wanted to get access to those. There's a handful of those wells that are currently. Already being monitored for groundwater by the state, by Arizona Department of Water Resources. There's, I don't think there's any in the town core area that are part of that monitoring where they.
Anybody in the town core that's on well water? They should all be on town water.
No, there's several wells that are actually not, not close to payway, more so the triangle and fairway wells. There's several private exempt wells just north of there. So that's something we'd have to look at. ADWR has their well inventory. So it shows up on their well inventory. So we can map all that out. Some of them are old wells that have never been closed and affects the casing might be somewhere and we'll have to track them down. One of the issues with Arizona Department of Water Resources is when they map the wells, they map it to a forty acre parcel. So they did that because they were doing a statewide inventory. So we might have to go out and do some, some field work and legwork to find out who actually owns that well and where the parcel is, where it specifically is. So, yeah, we're thinking about that. We've heard that from council before. We think the best way is just to monitor the wells, our wells and our usage to see where the groundwater falls. And then to look around adjacent wells, but we would have to get actually the landowners to allow us access to their wells. And then we'll have to see whether or not they construct it to a point that we can actually sound them easily without pulling the pump out. So.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
All good questions. Thank you. So it was back in November that we actually came forward with council with a, two professional services agreement, one with. Black and Beach and Clear Creek. Why, why the two is Clear Creek is the hydrogeologist. So they understand the well development. They understand all the well details. And Black of each, because the well water, we'd like to evaluate if it's best to look at using this well water and how can we use it inside the treatment plant and Black and Beach staff had actually done the evaluation of our water treatment plant. When we looked at purchasing the pall membranes a few years ago. So they understand both the West Tech Trident units and the, the pall unit. So. Once we gather the water quality data, then Black of each can help us recommend if we can bring that into the treatment plant and best utilize it. Or is there another way we can utilize this? That's why we have that team. Had what we wanted to do is actually, we're the missing component of that was actually. Uh, had, what we wanted to do is actually, we're the missing component of that was actually the company to actually do the well testing. It's uh cleaning that the wells and actually uh putting temporary pumps down and to develop it. As we looked at the different sites, uh, we thought there was a lot of variability. Um, the payway well, um, the casing says it's supposed to be three hundred feet deep. The last time we videoed it, we only got down about two hundred feet. So we believe there's some debris in there that has to be fluffed out. Um, talking with different companies, it's hard to really develop a scope of work. So we thought the best was actually to get, work with a company who has a contract, which is um Precision Electric, who has a contract with City Mesa. And we thought it'd be, it'd be about fifty thousand dollars for each of the sites to, to allow us several days of testing and cleaning to get to the point where we can put a temporary pump in and then discharge that water. So and instead of getting uh direct hard bids, we think the best opportunity, especially to test them out right now is we, we don't know uh what we're going to need to do these wells. So we want a little bit of flexibility and with council's approval, uh, that's what we're asking for tonight to, to work with uh Precision Electric. Precision Electric has actually helped us out before. They've done um uh well work for us in Desert Hills. They've actually helped us in our, both our Galvin well in the past and, and the um Third Avenue Joy Ranch well site. So um we'd like to utilize them. Uh, they seem to understand the area and they, they seem that something that we think of staff, we can work with very quickly and get this done. Again, the goal being that have the information uh ready for next year's capital program. So we can pick at least one, if not two of the wells and hopefully all three to get them equipped. And then we can figure out how best to utilize that resource for the town uh for the pending shortage that we think will start in January of twenty-seven, when the reductions start to occur.
Okay, are we ready to uh make a motion on this? Is there public, uh, public comment? No, public comment. We, we've changed the format of these.
Yeah.
I'll make the uh the motion. I move to authorize a cooperative purchasing agreement with Precision Electric Motor and Pump Services to rehabilitate and test two existing Cave Creek wells for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars and authorize the town manager and staff to execute the necessary contract documents.
Second. Okay, uh, the motion.
I'm glad we're doing it now, should have been done a couple of years ago, but better late than ever. And I seem to recall um a couple of years ago, uh, somebody saying that, that the water company, uh, Jay George's Water Company had rights to about six hundred acre feet a year. Obviously, that was before a lot of the exempt wells have been driven or been drilled. Probably not going to get that much out of there, but if you can get a hundred, two hundred acre feet out of it, that's a pretty significant, pretty significant help.
It's water, we need water.
Other comments? Okay, this is financial roll call.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Vice member Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We're on to number four, which is council discussion process approval of non-disclosure agreement with the Harkaway Valley Landowners LLC. The last staff evaluated if this project could provide the town with new water resources and authorize the town manager staff to execute the necessary documents.
Yeah, I think we just need a, a very, very brief.
I have, you know, I'll make it very brief. Yeah. So really it's going back to the, the shortage that we anticipate and uh we're looking for both short and long-term solutions. Harkaway Valley, this is probably the next slide that explains it, is a, is, is an area, it's a sub-basin that's west of the Phoenix metro area that has been set aside as an area that groundwater can be moved into the Phoenix metro area. The uh Phoenix metro uh active management area AMA, uh, don't use that many acronyms. Um, that why we want to look at this is because there's some other jurisdictions that have been looking at buying uh groundwater resources out in this area. Uh, so we're, we're not leading uh the, uh, leading this charge, we're actually looking at other people. And then what it would do is we could utilize the CAP canal to transmit this groundwater to Cave Creek because we have an advantage of the fact that we actually do have our own canal outtake on the CAP canal. So we can either bring this water to Cave Creek for treatment or we can work with our existing IGA with the city of Phoenix to have them treat, divert, treat and deliver this water to us. So well, this is just one of the tools that we're looking at to try and mitigate the town's uh expected water shortages upcoming. Um, and by signing the, uh, the NDA, um, that allows us uh time to talk to the agency out there and talk to the different companies potentially involved out there and gather all the information. Um, this, this never, the only financial impact is the fact that we're probably working with Michelle Van Quothen and Brad Hill to put together the reports to bring back to council to uh present to you the pros and cons of this. At this point, uh, we can't even get the financials put together until we have the NDA in place. So we're just hopeful if council approves this, then that'll allow us to move forward with bringing information back at a future council date for you to, to think about and talk about.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, uh, any questions from council? Any public comment? Seeing none, um, I, I will make this motion and then I have another motion to make right after this. Council discussion possible, uh, I move that we, uh, we approve the non-disclosure agreement with Harkaway Valley Landowners LLC to allow staff to evaluate this project, provide the town with new water resources and authorize the town management staff to execute necessary documents.
Second.
Okay, uh, we need it.
Very.
Okay, any comments?
Yeah, I, I think it's great that we're looking at well water. I think it's great that we're also examining uh the dam that's being built. And I think this is, this is kind of the fourth source of water. And I think where we live, more sources of water we find, the better off we're going to be.
Here, here. Okay, so we have motion, uh, this is, uh, we can do this as a voice vote, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. I move to have any uh person having information subject to the, the uh NDA sign an acknowledgement under, that they understand and agree to comply. And the, the whole idea there is this NDA, uh, yeah, we have legal jeopardy if this information, if the information we receive back is disclosed through some means. And it's, uh, it's a standard stuff, but everybody who doesn't deal with NDAs and this sort of thing needs to know it. We may as well cover everybody at the same time.
Second.
Okay, um, if the other comments?
No, you have to do that. I mean, that's just legally smart.
Other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero and our business this evening is finished.